This is a public meeting and is being conducted virtually. I ask that everyone respect the process and refrain from speaking, interrupting or otherwise disrupting the meeting. And that you keep your mics off or muted unless it is time for you to talk. With that, we are also going to dispense with the pledge of allegiance and the prayer, given that it is a virtual meeting. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you would do a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Oystash.
Present.
And Mayor Clock.
Mayor.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. Are there any announcements, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do have one tonight. I'd like to remind the public that City Hall will be closed on Monday, September 7th, for the Labor Day holiday. And Mayor, that will take us to public input.
All right. And today, we have one, I believe, as you can start. I will read the information. I want to, again, welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When you are called to speak, let us know if you are speaking solely for yourself on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching on SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be encouraged through staff. Thank you. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Our speaker tonight is Angie Miller.
Angie.
Yes, thank you. My name is Angie Miller, and I am the president of the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council. I am joining you this evening to speak about the Nineteenth Amendment and voting. August 18th marked the 100th anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment. U.S. Secretary of State Bainbridge Colby certified it in Washington, D.C., on August 26, 1920, ending the struggle for the vote that started a century earlier. On Election Day in 1920, millions of American women exercised this right for the first time. Now, let me be clear: not all women won the right to vote on that August day 100 years ago. Black and brown women continued their struggle to win the vote until the passage of the Voting Rights Act in August 1965. The right to vote was so important to all these women that they were willing to make speeches, pass petitions, march in parades, be arrested, force fed, and even die for the cause, all because they believed, like men, they deserved the right of citizenship. Every time I go to vote, it does not escape me that I am standing on the shoulders of such great women: women such as Susan B. Anthony, Mary Church Terrell, Nina Otero Warren, Inez Mahalyn, Aida B. Wells, Elizabeth Cady Stanton, Sojourner Truce, Matilda Joslyn Gage, Aurora Lucero, and Alice Paul, just to name a few. They fought for the right to vote because they knew it was a way to have their voices heard, and it still is. Your voice matters. Your vote matters for our country, for our state, and for your local community. Whether you receive your ballot in the mail in September or go to the polls in November, when you fill out that ballot, you sit or stand a little taller because you're on the shoulders of women who fought for a right that we all must cherish and exercise. I request City Council, along with all of the citizens of this great city of Saginaw, to exercise your right and vote in the November election. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? I think that was our only public speaker.
Yes, we are now at remarks of council.
Okay. I'd like to remind the council members of the three-minute limit, and tonight, I believe, we begin with Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams.
Yes, I would just like to invite everyone to get out and vote. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next will be Councilmember Oystash.
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to everybody who's watching and with us. Also, just real quick to our public inputs speaker Nancy, or Nancy, Angie. It was good to hear your voice, and thanks for coming and speaking at such a great historical event. Just a couple of things here, Mayor, to share with the group. First, I would like to congratulate one of Saginaw's own citizens, Alex Mixter, and a dear friend of mine. He's also the historic district commission chair for the city of Saginaw. Alex is going to be receiving the 2020 Citizens Award from the Michigan Historic Preservation Network this year for the, for all the work that he's been doing with the Lee Mansion Restoration Project. So congratulations to him and all the efforts that he's been putting into that project over the last couple of years. People that received this award are getting this award for their outstanding individual who is the personal effort and involvement in historic preservation of and projects that they do for their city around the state. So again, congratulations to him. One other quick announcement I have written down here: I am working with the Great Lakes Bay Health Centers again, and we have an event coming up. There are going to be virtual events this time instead of tours of the facilities physically. So August 25th at 5:00 p.m., and then also on August 27th at 5:30 p.m., come and see how the facilities are being run, especially during the COVID-19 pandemics. They offer services for medical, dental, and also for behavioral sciences. And a lot of times, the appointments are free, or they do have a sliding scale based on your income, or if you have insurance, they also take that as well. So invite everybody to visit their page, or even go to my city councilman page on Facebook, and you can find information and links there to sign up for that event. Mayor, that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls.
Good morning, Congress. Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to thank the Clerk for the information that she sent out to the rest of the council members to let us know how many ball ballots we had during the previous primaries. I would encourage everybody to get involved and let the community know the proper way to vote. I understand there is some things happening to help out with that initiative. So I'd like to thank the Clerk and the city of Saginaw for getting information out. Thank you. And after listening to Angie talk about the women who fought for the rights of votes and African-Americans that fought for the rights of vote, I mean, all the stuff they had to do in the South, North, to just to cast their ballots. I mean, people were either killed for the right to cast their ballot. They used to make African-Americans count or guess how many jelly beans in a jar, and if their taxes were paid, and all these different things. And it was hurtful, but we had a lot of people that went to the polls anyway to cast their ballot. But today, in 2020, we have a lot of citizens that says they're not going to vote because they don't like either one of the candidates. Some young people think that their vote don't count, and I need to let them know that if their vote didn't count, we wouldn't be asking to vote. And not only that, your vote do count. So we need to remind our citizens that their vote do count. Everybody, every man, woman, and child only get one vote. I understand that in Michigan, we, if we had, if in every precinct, if one person had voted, that we probably wouldn't have. The nice guy that we have as a president today, I started to say something else like idiot or something like that, but I didn't say that. But we need to do what we need to do to make sure we get the right people in office. I was encouraging everybody to get out and vote. I was encouraging every citizen to take somebody else with them, and, you know, because it's very important. Thank you. That's all I got to share is that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clock. I wanted to start this evening by mentioning the progress on the census here in the state of Michigan. I've read recent reports and been informed that Michigan is in the top five in the return rate on the census, at roughly 70%. Just for comparison, there are states in the Southwest that are less than 50%. And Saginaw County is somewhere in the top 10, I believe, in our state. And I just wanted to say that's thanks to the efforts of people like our own Mayor Pro Tem, Brenda Moore, coming from Michigan Municipal League, and she's done a lot to coordinate our efforts with the county to make sure that the census itself always is present at our events, our county events. And she set a goal, and she's hitting it. If they can count 56 people at an event, it brings us, what, Brenda, $1 million in funding, I think is her number? And we've got one more month, and I know she's not stopping until we hit the finish line. So very good for our city and our state. I wanted to mention that Tuesday, September 1st, is the Officer of the Year Awards for all of Saginaw County at the Saginaw Exchange Club Luncheon, which is held at the Saginaw Club at noon. And this includes our SPD Officer of the Year, Jordan Engelhardt, and officers and agents from seven other agencies in Saginaw County. And our police chief will be there to present the award to our officer and the chiefs and heads of the other agencies. And their spouses are always invited for a lunch there. Later in our meeting, we have a resolution on a street lighting purchase from Consumers Energy, and I just wanted to point out how this continues our progress on an important public safety infrastructure item: that once we own these lights that are in the contract change tonight, we convert those to LED, and this also saves us money. And this gets us down to where we have one really big area left to work on, and that's in the northeast Saginaw area. And if we get that one purchased in and converted, that will be a huge impact on our budget and public safety. I just want to thank the manager and the Public Works team for continuing this effort. And that's my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to say tonight. I just want to say thank you to Angie for bringing those encouraging words and also the facts that in the last 100 years, it has been a issue, but we've come a long ways. And I totally salute and support strong women. And in the last few weeks, we've heard quite a bit from some strong women in our country, and it is encouraging because it gives not only the women on council, but any woman that has an ambition to be in a political position or to be who they are and stand where they want to stand, encouraging thoughts and words and inspiration to continue to do that. So Angie, thank you. In 1920, you know, a lot of women fought. They were valiant and never gave up. And even to those who continue to fight for our voting rights, I stand with you, and I appreciate everybody's efforts. And to all of my fellow councilwomen on here, we're together, and we're going to be here. So that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Miller for the update. For those that did not know it, it was an educational lesson. I really want to give kudos to all of my fellow councilpersons, whether you were with me or not in the census. We're in this together. We approximately made the $5 million that I set out to do, but we still have a long ways to go. We did meet the goal on last Friday. I hollered I needed five more people and the mayor. I got on the bullhorn, and people came from everywhere. So we did exceed it. So in the last couple of weeks, just at one activity, we were netting in like 96 one time. Do the math. 56, you're right, John. 56 times $1,800 is $1,008,000. So the goal was to make 5,000, well, 5 million. I'm sorry. And we made it. But I'm not done. Also, I want to start including, are you registered to vote? That is another thing that we all need to work on. We need to make sure everybody gets out and votes, regardless to the party, regardless. We all need to exercise our rights. If we don't exercise them, how can we expect for others to do it? So I encourage all of my fellow councilpersons, if you know somebody that hasn't, get you some of those absentee ballot slips and, I'm sorry, the application. And then tell people, just drop them in the drop box. Ms. Jan, I know that's going to be a little work, but if we do that, then we don't have to worry. The other thing is, for the city of Saginaw, you have showed up and showed out, and I am truly, truly appreciative of everyone who took part in any of the censuses that we did. We have been working with county commissioners, trying to bridge the gap. My whole stand has always been the bridge. Well, we've got a couple council, we've got a couple of county commissioners who said the bridge ain't going to stop us. We coming on over. So they have really been working diligently with us. We are planning a couple of more. We're going to go to the senior citizens high-rise, and we've got some nice little goodies for them. No food, because we don't want to make them sick. And the other one is, on this Wednesday at 10 o'clock, we will be working in conjunction with Saginaw Community Action Center. We will be there for the food giveaway, doing census. They also have a food truck. So it will be Saginaw City Council, Saginaw County Commissioners. I'll do it on the missaladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Next, we have Councilmember Bench.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I too would like to thank Angie for being here tonight, discussing the importance of women being able to vote. Not only do our votes matter, but our voices and leadership matter, and it's been a very exciting time, I think, seeing some of the historic things that are going on for women here in America, and the amounts of women that are running for office and winning. We definitely bring something essential to the table and to the conversation. So the more that, more women run and win and lead, the better off, I think, we all are. So, and I'd also like to say that bad people are elected by good people who don't vote. So your vote matters, whether you feel like you're excited about somebody who's running or not. You know, there are down-ballot races that are very important, that have huge influence on your life and the quality of your life, even more so than the presidency. So if you can't get excited about the top of the ticket, find someone you can get excited about further down the ballot and get involved. And, you know, find a reason, find a reason, because these things that are going on in our world right now are too important for us to be sitting it out. I'd also like to thank the public school district for leading and opting to go virtual online for our students as a parent. I've been very nervous and continue to be nervous about even virtual homeschooling for my kids, but at least I know that they will be safe and healthy, and they will not be exposing their teachers to any additional risk than they have to be. So I'm very happy and pleased and grateful to our public school district for keeping kids first the way they say they do. I also, really quick, want to thank Positive Results Downtown and the group behind Light Up the City for finding creative, safe ways for events to still take place throughout the summer. I know Positive Results Downtown is going to have another three dinner dashes with our food trucks down in Morley Plaza in September. So we just want to thank them because with the pandemic and everything that's been canceled, it's been really nice to get out and see some of the people out in the community and get some good food and just be able to celebrate the beautiful weather and do so safely. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we have Councilmember Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm so glad to see one of our most loyal city council attenders giving public comment today and celebrating a milestone in a right that I care very much about. I looked it up a couple months ago, and only about a third of our board and commission seats are filled by women, and more than half of the city residents are women, and so we have some making up to do. So I hope that my lady neighbors especially will take a look at the list of available boards and commissions on the Clerk's website and consider applying. If you need to be asked, please consider this me asking. So you can go ahead and apply online, or you can turn in an application to the lovely ladies at the Clerk's office. In general, we must do everything we can to make sure that every citizen has fair and easy access to voting, and that they're available to participate in democracy as well. So I encourage all of our neighbors to please sign up and vote absentee in November. It is still census season, just as a few of my fellow councilmembers mentioned. It seems unclear from the feds when the campaign will end, but that's all the more reason that we need to get out and finish our census ASAP. As an employee of Starz, I'm looking forward to working with the community partners, including the city, on a few events coming up in this last stretch, although I can't hold a candle to the efforts of our Mayor Pro Tem, who I know has worked so hard on this effort. My thoughts continue to go out to our friends in education, just as Annie mentioned. Along with kids and parents and grandparents as they navigate the upcoming school year, there are no easy choices, and I know that they are doing their best to make the best out of this tough situation. And then finally, huge congrats to Alex Mixter on his Citizens Award from the Michigan Historical Preservation Network. It is so very well-deserved, and I'm so glad to call Alex a neighbor and a friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Forbes. For my comments, I do also want to congratulate Alex Mixter. From day one, he's been heavily involved with preservation here in the city, and he's done a wonderful job with Lee Mansion. I also want to thank Angie for her comments. As for the rest of the comments mentioned by council, I will only second them rather than repeat those. I do want to mention the census work of Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for all you've done there. There's two aspects to that census count that's so important. One is the funds that can come to the city. Mayor Pro Tem mentioned the $1 million for 56 people. Technically, that's over 10 years, nonetheless, it's an important count for us. But in addition, the count by the census will be used shortly after the census is complete to determine the representation in Congress of our House of Representatives members. And that is very critical, too. It's important to vote, but the more people we have representing us, the more power we have as well. So I want to remind everybody that that is equally as important as the funds that the census, you're being counted, makes. For councilmembers' education, I guess, there is an item on the agenda that I mentioned I would be bringing up. A few weeks ago, I mentioned that would be, and it's the renaming ordinance, and it is my proposal. I do want to, just briefly, if anyone has any questions and want to cover those things, we can do that at the time, but I do want to say that stemmed from my concern that the ordinance itself does not currently have any standards by which the planning commissioner or council would judge what is in the city's best interest or that would justify granting a petition. I have used the term, the persons, if it is involving a person, their entire legacy, because I believe that gives some standard for both the planning commissioner and council. In addition, the waiting period of five years was because it gives the time, a break for that legacy to be determined. We have had at least one person in Saginaw County for which a road was named, and that person later was prosecuted for crimes, and it reflected badly on the naming. And that person was Reverend Gillan. It's not in the city, but I don't want those things happening in our city if we can at all avoid it. There aren't that many issues that come up with renaming, but we are talking public assets, public infrastructure. Even the Saginaw County Hall of Fame requires a person be deceased before they be considered for the Hall of Fame. So I'll cover more if we have other questions. With that, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we are now at reports of the city manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, and good evening to everybody. And first, I do want to, again, remind residents who are struggling to pay utilities, please contact local and state agencies for assistance. I believe there's assistance available for most utilities, including water and gas and electricity. So I encourage residents who are having difficulty to contact them as soon as possible to receive that assistance. A lot of talk about the census, and I just want to recognize those that are working on it, and Mayor Pro Tem Moore has been a leader in that. The whole process of setting up those events takes a lot of work and a lot of planning and a lot of moving of equipment, so I wanted to recognize our staff who have been working on that. And Vicky Davis and Rachel Hoseeska have been doing a lot of the planning, and assisting also has been Matt Shipnick and John Stempel, and the, most of the inspections Division staff have been helping and doing a great job setting up these events. So it's not something where we just set up a table and invite people to come, so it does take a lot of planning, and Mayor Pro Tem Moore has been working with that, with those staff members who have been carting all that stuff there, including the multiple tablets that were funded through the MML grant. So a lot of work by several people has gone into that, those census events. And I know we'll have more to come. Councilmember Forbes is planning another one at City Hall with Starz and Community Foundation, and our staff will assist with that as well. And then the other item I wanted to mention during the meeting, because you all did receive a memo, that there were questions about training that the police department has been working on. We had additional de-escalation training that started today, and we'll have, I believe, two sessions a week for the next three weeks moving our officers through there, but that's just one of them that they've been doing, and that's, they're currently working through. But the Saginaw Police Department has delivered or participated in numerous training sessions over the past five to seven years that have served to emphasize the need and importance for the use of de-escalation techniques to serve the community. They have been trained on cultural competency training, attended by 14 members of the Saginaw Police Department. This training was a culmination of a multi-year training partnership that was previously provided to all other members of the Saginaw Police Department, and it served to bring awareness to individual cultural biases and promote understanding of unique cultural experiences. They've also gone through Bridges Out of Poverty Training, attended by all sworn members of the Saginaw Police Department. This training serves to bring awareness to the challenges of persons living in poverty, awareness of common poverty-based practices, behaviors, and understanding of poverty-based communication styles. Acute Uncontrolled Agitation Recognition Training was also attended by 13 members of the Saginaw Police Department. This training was a culmination of a multi-year training campaign to have all sworn members of the SPD trained, and this served to provide officers with appropriate communication skills and techniques to calm persons in drug-induced states of delirium. Trauma-informed response to victims of crime training attended by all sworn members of the Saginaw Police Department served to increase the knowledge, awareness, and use of appropriate communication skills to facilitate information gathering from victims and provide victims with needed community resources and support. And the Saginaw Police Department has also sought further de-escalation training through the U.S. Department of Justice, Community-Oriented Police Services Collaborative Reform Initiative Technical Assistance Program. The SPD requested verbal and tactical de-escalation training sessions provided by the most progressive leaders in the international criminal justice and social service fields, and they are currently on a waiting list for that training as it... was also attended by 13 members of the Saginaw Police Department. This training was a culmination of a multi-year training campaign to have all sworn members of the SPD trained, and this served to provide officers with appropriate communication skills and techniques to calm persons in drug-induced states of delirium. Trauma-informed response to victims of crime training attended by all sworn members of the Saginaw Police Department served to increase the knowledge, awareness, and use of appropriate communication skills to facilitate information gathering from victims and provide victims with needed community resources and support. And the Saginaw Police Department has also sought further de-escalation training through the U.S. Department of Justice, Community Oriented Police Services Collaborative Reform Initiative Technical Assistance Program. The SPD requested verbal and tactical de-escalation training sessions provided by the most progressive leaders in the international criminal justice and social service fields. And they are currently on a waiting list for that training as it is under development at this time. So I wanted to provide that update with council and the public who is watching the meeting tonight. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Are there any questions for the manager regarding his report? Any councilmembers? Councilmembers, just last chance. Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, we are ready.
We are now at the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk at this time? Any exceptions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move right down.
Support.
And ball support. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion is carried. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at boards, commission, and committee reports.
Are there any reports from members of the city council regarding any boards, commissions, or committees? Anybody?
Councilman Allen.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore first, and then Councilmember Mill.
I just want to report that we just said that we'll continue to give out our fruit and vegetable boxes to a number of citizens in the city of Saginaw. Not sure exactly if it's at the end of this month or the end of next month, but they will continue to do it. And hopefully, we will get another wave of some type of vegetables, fruits, as well as stable food that we've been handing out. Just wanted to let the citizens know what's interesting. Please shoot me a message, and I can try to get you on our next list because we're arriving to the end of it now. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Mill.
Yes, last week, the MBS International Airport Commission met. Minor item, we're disposing of a piece of snow removal equipment that followed from our acquisition of new snow removal equipment. And our funding is actually looking pretty good at the moment. We've received the first of our CARES Act funding, and the use of the airport is swinging back upward. We're probably somewhere in 40 to 50% of the available seats on the airlines. And we've actually normalized the parking operations now, where they had opened the gates up and parking was free for a while. It is back to normal operation at MBS for your parking at this time. So things are progressing out at the airport.
Any other reports from boards, commissions, or committees? I have one. I may ask for a little help on this one, but Stars had its board meeting today. They plan to open their general route, bus routes on August, at the end of this month, August 31st, with multiple COVID-19 safety precautions in place. Originally, they were worked for being prepared in case the schools were going to reopen for in-person attendance as well. But with that change, which, by the way, I think is a good idea, that won't be part of it, but the public, general public using the general routes will be available. Everyone will be required to wear a mask and use hand sanitizer. There was also on the agenda today, purchase of a number of disinfecting pieces of equipment, both portable units for the entire buses, as well as hand ones. Those are with CARES Act funds, and they will be able to disinfect every vehicle after every use, every route is run, as well as be being disinfected during the course of the of the routes. They also are buying new vehicles for the rides-to-wellness program. It'll be the first new vehicles they've been able to purchase for that program. So that is excellent. Councilmember Forbes, perhaps you could give a little more detail from here.
You pretty much covered everything. We're trying our very best to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to to keep riders safe. We're only moving forward because we feel like with all the precautions we've taken, that that is that it's safe to do so. So there are a few changes to the routes, which we'll be updating on the website shortly. And so please keep an eye on that. Check out our Facebook for the latest updates. But we're really looking forward to working with our riders to be able to increase service, but in the safest way possible. But great summary. Lots of good things, and I think it's I think that we're in a good place to be able to move forward, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Forbes. Any other reports from councilmembers? All right, Madam Clerk, we're ready to move on.
Thank you, Mayor. Your next order of business is ordinance introduction. We have one this evening, and it's to amend Chapter 152 of Title 15 Land Usage by amending Section 152.056 titled Naming or Renaming Streets, Parks, Buildings, or Other Property.
Because this is my proposal, I will move its introduction. Is there a second?
Councilman Mill will second.
All right, is there discussion?
Once again, I have a real problem with the five years. And so, once again, I just have a real rough time with the five years. The ordinance, my understanding is, we changed it in 2018, and as long as they are deceased, really, we shouldn't put a time on it, but I just think five years is too long. So I can't go along with that one.
Any other discussion?
Bench, yes.
Go ahead.
I'd have to agree with Mayor Pro Tem Moore, but I'd even go further. I just don't think this is necessary. The requirement is there that they be deceased. I think that's enough. There's a adequate process in place that has so far safeguarded us against, you know, any ill intent or whatever the concerns are, I guess. But I really just don't think that this should be a priority right now. We've got a lot of other things going on that I think we could be focused on. And I just kind of think this is an arbitrary change that really doesn't benefit the citizens, that's for sure. So I will be of no vote on this one.
Thank you. For point of clarification, there is no requirement at the current in the current ordinance of deceased, nor is there any standard by which the best interest of the city can be determined. So that was part of the reason. Is there any I'll cover more if anyone has any questions. And by the way, as far as Madam Mayor Pro Tem, just in response to the five-year versus or lesser time issue, the historical societies, its own Hall of Fame, which does not involve any kind of public infrastructure, has a three-year requirement for some person to be deceased before they would even be considered. What's important to me here is that we are talking about a permanent permanently affixing a new name to public infrastructure with no real standard in the current ordinance for the commission, planning commission, or council to really consider about what would justify granting a petition for a person, for a particular person. I would certainly have, you know, even though I think five years is reasonable, I have no objection if it was changed to three years. And if someone wanted to make that motion, I would not object. But the importance of this, I think that the land issue is highlighting why it's important to at least have the person deceased on some period of time before their legacy can be known. We already have a method of approving or of recognizing particular individuals in our ordinances. And those are letters, congratulatory letters, certificates of recognition, and proclamations, which we use regularly when there is a person, or a thing, or an event that has been requested to be recognized. A naming situation, a naming petition, is far beyond that kind of a request. That is something that is asking for a permanent change to a public asset, something that is going to be permanent, and that we want to reflect the image of the city in that asset. I do believe it's important that we make sure that when we are considering to whether someone's name should be affixed to a public infrastructure, that that person's legacy is known, and that there has been time for that legacy to be completely established. Naming someone, naming something beyond before that, I believe, is that's where the proclamation, certificate of recognition, those kinds of items are there for. And so that's that's the reasoning here. I will leave it to council at that point. If anyone else has any further discussion, please speak up now.
Annie has another comment.
Proceed.
Um, you've, you know, mentioned that these are public facilities. They are public facilities. They are not the Hall of Fame. These are public facilities that belong to the public, the very public that would petition to make those name changes, and the very public that would pay for those changes to be implemented should their petitions and should the process be followed. I'd like to point out that if this change were in place back when people came forward and honored Reverend Austin, this would have been something we wouldn't have been able to do. I don't think that this is the message we want to send to citizens, that if they choose and there is the will to honor someone while they're alive, I mean, I can somewhat agree with the qualification that perhaps they need to be dead, but I certainly don't have any, I cannot support any length of time. I just, I really think this is an arbitrary change that isn't necessary to make right now. And again, facilities belong to the public, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't know if I understand the intent of this as being fair at all, but I do think the city council has enough intelligence to grant that wish to an individual if we think he's of high quality in our community, that we don't have to wait until we can see what his legacy is. We know what most people's legacy is. And yes, sometimes some people do get in trouble, and it may happen, but it has not happened in Saginaw. We haven't had that problem where we have appointed someone and then gave them a bridge or a street name, and they come up to be a problem. So I think that when people come to us, we would judge that correctly as it comes to the city council meeting. And I don't think we ever had this particular ordinance in line to help us with that.
Any other comments or any other discussion?
I think that council needs to understand that even before it gets to us, it gets to planning. And so I can understand the debt to being deceased. I can understand that. And I guess my biggest concern is, is that are we picking and choosing what we want to do? Because if we are, then we're not doing our diligence. And so I guess for me, five years to me is long, really, any year is long, because I don't know. I mean, there may be some outstanding citizen that everybody feels like we should do it. And once again, this is not a burden on the city. It will be the burden on the people due to petition. I agree, and I spoke about this this morning, and I agree. I think we got better things to worry about, but I can't go along with the five years. So that's why I'm at with it. I cannot go along with five years.
Sure. I do want to point out, Councilmember Bench, I can't agree with one point, and that was that it is the public doing the petition. That is not generally correct. It is usually a particular party or group of people who are interested in the petition for a thing and doing a petition. And it could be more, but usually it is not. The public that I'm talking about is that public 20 years from now, 30 years from now. And and you're, Mayor Pro Tem, it isn't the highest priority, but it is something that can, and I believe it's appropriate to address it. In order to perhaps address your concern, I would certainly be willing to move to amend my own motion to make it a three-year period of deceased as opposed to a five, if that would be of any benefit to you.
It's not so much it's a benefit for me. It's in my seven years of sitting on council, we've only had this done twice, or two petitions that have come in front of us. This is not an everyday occurrence, or every month, or every year. And I'm just, you know, once again, I'm going back to my priorities. My priorities is, I'm help people get back on their feet, trying to bring dollars into the city, trying to do things that are going to make our city a place where we live, work, and play, and love to be here. So all the way around, either way we do it, three years, five years, it's still going to be a problem. It's still going to have to be addressed. Why can't we address it with the individuals who have to make the decision, that planning committee? Why can't we set up some guidelines for them? I mean, I mean.
This is a guideline for them. There is nothing there now, except they are required to look at the history of the existing name, and they are required to consider what's in the city's best interest. But there is no further standard of what that means at all. Now, I suppose you could say you could come up with specific items of different kinds of standards. In my opinion, talking about the legacy of the individual is a standard. And that is why I proposed it the way I did. That's the best I can explain. It seems to me that by telling the planning commission and council that a person's legacy is not complete until they're deceased, and that that legacy is what is important to consider in addition to the prior name, that gives them a standard. It gives them guidance. And I think that's a reasonable thing to do.
Mayor Clock?
Yes.
This is Clerk Santos. You have a motion to amend on the floor. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second. More, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion to amend to revert, switch from five years to three years?
Williams here. I'm just going to say that we have better things to do than this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, then.
I have a little bit. I don't think that we need to be, I hope that we're not trying to stop something to happen in the future, or maybe some people didn't like the process, or who would get picked before. And like I said, I think that the city council is intelligent enough to pick somebody to rename a street or bridge or a building, a building, if they want to do that. The voters voted us in, and they trusting us to do things like that. So I'm not going to vote for the amendment or the motion.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, Mayor Ostache here.
Yes.
The part, the part, one of the parts that I had a hard time with is the words for entire legacy, because we're talking about whether the person's passed away, or even if they're alive. And you also referenced the Hall of Fame. When I look at legacy, I think of doing things like this, where somebody has a significant contribution that better the city of Saginaw has really impacted the city in some way. And so that's, that's another area that's hard for me, because then I have to lean back. The person could be alive, but they're making such large contributions that it should be honored in some way. I think that's the way I look at that.
I want to remind everybody, we have a method for honoring them by way of a proclamation already, which is specific to the individual. We bring them in, and we honor them. There, that is an important distinction between a person who is alive and can acknowledge and can receive that particular recognition versus a public asset being named, which is for the public, not for that person. That's the distinction here. But having, I understand your comments, so thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on the amendment?
I'll just chime in. It seems a reasonable compromise, and it would possibly leave the naming period with members of council who had more contact with an individual. By the end of a five-year period, there may not have been much personal contact to make any recommendation to the planning commission. So it brings it a little more into the immediate, but not in the moment. Still some time for reflection. So I could, I will support the amendment.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's call the question. All, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's, any opposed?
Yeah, no.
All right. Madam Clerk, I think we'll need a roll call.
Yes, Mayor Clock, Councilmember Balls.
No.
Councilmember Ostache, did we lose him?
No. Ostache is here, and Clerk, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, no.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Forbes?
No.
Councilmember Bench?
No.
Mayor Protam Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
No.
Councilmember Millen?
Yes.
And Mayor Clock?
Yes.
We have three yes votes and six no. Motion is denied.
All right, then, is there any further discussion on the main motion? Or do we want to call the question? Well, don't call it, because I'll just do, we don't need to have another vote. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the main motion. Let's do a roll call again, Madam Clerk, it's just a bit easier.
Councilmember Ostache?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm going to have to say no.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Forbes?
No.
Councilmember Bench?
No.
Mayor Protam Moore?
You know, I'm really lost. Are we going with the original ordinance? I'm sorry.
Yes, the original ordinance as written.
No.
Councilmember Scherzer?
No.
Councilmember Millen?
Yes.
Councilmember Balls?
No.
And Mayor Clock?
Yes.
We have two yes votes and seven no. Motion is denied.
All right, then we should move on to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we are at ordinance consideration and adoption. Our first one tonight is an ordinance to add Section 135.01 prohibition of Chapter 135, prohibition of use or consumption of marijuana in a public place of Title 13 general offenses.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move more.
Is there a second?
Bench will report.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Our second ordinance tonight is to add Section 91.36, smoking in parks regulations of Title IX general regulations.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move more.
Is there a second?
Bench will second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Any opposed? All right, Madam, it is carried as well. Madam Clerk?
Great, we are now at resolutions, and our first one is to approve the authorization for change to the standard street lighting contract and bill of sale with Consumers Energy Company.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move that.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, do you have the names?
I do, thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion on the first resolution? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Next one, Madam Clerk.
Our final resolution tonight is designating Louis Taylor, city engineer, as the single street administrator with the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Is there a motion?
I'll move more.
Moved and, is there a second?
Port Scherzer.
Scherzer second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
We are now at miscellaneous business. We do have one item there, Mayor. It's to designate an official representative of the city and an alternate for the virtual Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting on September 30th through October 2nd of 2020.
Is there a motion to approve a designation, and if so, who that person would?
Yeah, Mayor, we need to state the who you're going to have as the official and who's going to serve as the alternate.
That's correct. In most cases, the mayor would serve as the official. If anyone else cares to do it, that's okay too, but the, we would need a, Madam Clerk, Madam, Mayor Protam normally would be the alternate. Mayor Protam, was that a duty you can handle as an alternate?
No, I cannot handle it because I'm actually the president, and I'll be running the meeting. So I need to get a volunteer to take my place, and it needs someone that plans to be there because this is really important. I mean, I really want Saginaw to show up and represent, even though we're going virtual, the whole setup, I'll be out of the area for the next three or four days, and we're making preparations so we have it, so we have it set out. So anyone who was planning on attending, I think that we should make a name. But no, I'm so sorry, I can't be the alternate because I'm the one running the meeting, so.
I was, I figured that, but thought I'd give you that option to let us-
No, but I'm running the meeting.
All right. Is there someone who cares to be the alternate to attend the convention?
I would.
Is that Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
All right. Is anybody else? Pardon me?
I'd also like to attend.
All right, so we have a couple options. Anybody else? We can, I guess we might have to try and resolve, figure out how to choose between two volunteers, but.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr.
Go ahead.
Basically, remember it's virtue, and so the meeting is going to start when other things are going on. This is not to say we're going to the conference. This is to actually do a vote, a count. Saginaw gets two votes, and so we do want to exercise our two votes. We want to make sure we're there. Your third vote is me. Your third vote is going to be me.
All right.
Well, Mayor, to clarify, all the council members can participate-
Right.
-in the conference virtually. We're just stating the two representatives that will have voting authority.
All right, now.
Councilman Millen?
Yes.
I would propose, Councilman Balls, for our primary representative. I've seen that his attendance at the MML events is very regular, and he's very interested in the work they do. So I will propose Michael as the official representative. If Jamie would like to be the alternate, I would include that in the motion.
Well, you already got the mayor, so we only need one other council person.
Oh, I understood that the mayor was asking if others wanted to fill those spots.
I, I gave that option, but I mean, I think I should. If someone else insisted, I would certainly consider that, but I think I should be there.
Oh, well, I, I will then propose the mayor as the official representative and Councilman Balls be the alternate.
Councilmembers, is that, is that your pleasure? And Councilmember Forbes, is that acceptable?
Fine.
All right.
Well, I, I will set that in the form of a motion, then, the mayor be the official representative and Councilman Balls an alternate.
All right, there has been a motion made. Is there a second?
Support.
I, I'm sorry, someone-
Support. Ostache.
And that's Ostache? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? It is carried. Thank you, Councilmember Millen. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, councilmembers.
Yep, is there any other business to be attended to before we close? Any other business? Madam, Madam Mayor Protam?
I'd like to, and I, city staff, please forgive me. You have been dynamite. I'm sitting at home every day trying to figure out what I can do special because you're right, manager. They have actually, I couldn't do it without, and if they don't believe me, ask John Stempel. I can't do anything that I do without their help. And I do want to give them kudos, shout-outs. The citizens are enjoying them, they're meeting them, and it is just, it has just been a ball. So if you missed them, you missed a treat because everybody just has a fun time. So I really wanted to do that. I also want to do some kudos to my fellow council people because even though we didn't have the affair in March, we had Jamie Forbes, who received Level One, we got Bill and Autumn, who were so close, and also Mr. Balls, he was receiving Level One. And as a matter of fact, I don't know if Jamie knows it, but you have been appointed for the EO Board, and so you'll be getting the documentation soon on it. I need to have a legacy go behind me and, and stay engaged with MML. We're there now, we're at the table, and we need to stay engaged. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else with any other business?
Yes, I do have some business. I did a pass on to Mrs. Stempel over on Armond Drive in the Sheridan Park neighborhood. There's a vehicle there that's been tagged for weeks. They done put two or three tags on it on the street, and one of the citizens told me the other day that they're using it as a slide. The kids are hopping on the car, sliding from the roof all the way down the car for fun and games, and the parents not doing anything about it. So I would like Mrs. Stempel to get over there and have that car pulled off this street, please, before somebody get hurt.
Thank you. Anybody else with anything else?
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a question for, real quick.
Yes, go ahead.
So my question is with the master plan, I was wondering if the manager maybe could at next meeting, give us a little update on where we're at with that. I do have some citizens that have been asking that question as well, and they're also getting excited to participate through that process as we do.
Okay, Mr. Manager, leave it to you. Okay. Anybody else? Any other items before we close? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move more.
Port Bench.
It moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I assume there's no one opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you.